Hold on, meeting.
I'll take it away from them.
Okay, following meeting order, city clerk.
Councilmember, agency director, authority member Molly.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The invocation will be Pastor Matt Chavez from Grace Chapel.
Thank you for having me. If I was 20 years younger, I would take a picture of myself. Because my mom would be so proud that I was doing this, you know, so. Oh, you got it. Even better. She'll never believe it otherwise. Did you get it?
It's not like I'm a real coordinator here. Go now. Got you.
Got it. Of course Pastor Chris is gonna get mad at me for raising my hands, but you know, okay. Well, let's please bow for a word of prayer. Father, we come before you right now, and Father, I want to say thank you so much for the city of Lancaster and for welcoming our family and making us feel at home very quickly. And Father, I want to lift up each council member to you. Father, I pray that you would encourage them by knowing that they do so much good for our people in this city and that they, sometimes it's a thankless job. So Father, we just pray that you would encourage them with that. Father, your word says that all good and perfect gifts come from above, and wisdom is one of those perfect gifts, so I pray for you to pour out your wisdom in this room right now. Father, help us to be civil and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make. Jesus, we would just want to say thanks, want to say thank you for all that you've done for us, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Angela, you want to do the flag?
Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so who's gonna do the present? You do it. Ken and Angela. Okay. Well, we're going to introduce the new captain of the highway patrol, and I'm gonna have Angela and Ken go down and make the presentation because they're running for reelection. Sort of.
Why don't you step up here?
Sure, sure.
So, we want to face the council first, and then we'll turn around and introduce into the, to everybody in the audience. On behalf of the city of Lancaster, we want to welcome you. We hope that your stay will be a long, long stay, and also to a very safe state. We were debating your last aim on pronouncing, I work with a Hogue one. Is that how you pronounce it?
Close enough.
Holgwin?
It's Holgwin, yes. That's great.
Holgwin, okay, alright.
That wasn't close at all.
For whatever reason, there's always, people have an issue with the pronunciation, but that's fine, I understand.
Alright.
Holgwin is fine. Thank you.
Jesse, welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Welcome very much. And also, if you could tell the audience a little bit about yourself, a little bit about your history, we'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much for the opportunity, Mayor, council members, and Vice Mayor, thank you very much for setting, giving me the opportunity. It's a pleasure to be here, I'm very excited to be on Low Valley. Took over the command in January. I'm a transferring captain from the Marin area, I've been with the Highway Patrol 21 years, this is my fifth command, so I've kind of bounced around a little bit. I am originally from Southern California, so I am back home, which is a good thing. I think the latest policy that we have is that we're committed to two years unless we promote out, so I think you have me at least for two years, but I've had some good experiences already in my short tenure here, and I look forward to expanding those partnerships and come with some very good experiences working with localities, municipalities, and different parts, so looking forward to continuing those partnerships, I think we can do some good things, and yeah, looking forward to that, so thank you very much for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Keep him.
I don't know if I got it.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Well, depends on who stops you.
Definitely got it. City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Let's go to NB1. Who's presenting that? Barbara Boswell. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Maria.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Crist, and members of council, commissioners. The item before you is amendment to resolution SA 10-15. It is providing authorization to issue and sale to series of tax allocation bonds. You might recall, we were before you, a few months back, requesting authorization to refund bonds, and that refunding is subject to Department of Finance approval. When it got to Department of Finance, they wanted some changes in the language. It doesn't change the intent, or what we're trying to do, which is refinance and obligation at a lower rate to save the taxpayers' money. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Maria Zano?
Hi there. I'll do the best I can today. A lot of my notes and stuff were taken from me, that I worked on for three years, or whatever, and so I'm going to try and, and then my phone today went completely out, so I'm hoping I didn't lose all my information on my phone again. What I want to talk about is the issuance and the sale of two series of tax allocating, refunding bonds. What I'm wanting to know is if those bonds are from the 2006 series of bonds. I've come before you before on issues regarding the Trading with the Enemies Act, the Israeli-Palestinian Declaration of Principles, all the acts of 1965, but these acts of, I mean, these bonds of 2006. I believe, are they for the transportation funding protection, and the highway safety, traffic reduction, and air quality, port security bond? Those bonds? Okay. And also, there's the one from the kindergarten university Public Education Facilities Bond Act? No?
No.
Okay, well, that was a 2002 series, I believe. It was, you know, that was the, it was the Proposition 47 bond? At one time? That was, that was supposed to be protection of safe schools? I think? Okay, and then, so, back in 2006, the bonds that came about, that I remember, was for, between Topco and KB Homes. I remember, because I was at the school district at that time, and they were trying to get bonds approved for Topco and KB Homes. And that listed a whole bunch of businesses under Topco, and that they were trying to get, here, hold on, I gotta put my glasses on, that they were trying to get approved. They asked for rezoning, and they came to the school board meetings asking for these bond approvals, they said there'd be lots of money for school construction and building.
I don't know, Angela's in charge of the bonds.
And actually, what happened with them, with these, already?
Maria, I think you're talking about bonds that aren't even on the table. We're not even discussing the ones you're talking about.
Which ones are you talking about, then? This is the 2000 A Bonds and B Bonds, combined into a single series, and then there's also the trust, which I believe was the Housing and Emergency Shelter Trust Fund.
Angela's in charge of the bonds.
Okay.
Okay.
I feel that if the refunding of these bonds should not go to the school dis-
Thank you, Maria. Thank you.
Okay, any other cards? Is that it? Your motion?
I'll move we adopt resolution number SA 05-16.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous? Moving on to the minutes, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm abstaining, because I wasn't here. The consent calendar.
4-1.
Oh, 4-1, no, 4-0, 1.
4-0-1, Mayor Paris abstaining.
Okay, consent calendar, anything to be removed?
Yeah, there are speaker cards on all of them.
Okay, so let's remove CC 3, 5, 2, and 8. Is there a motion on the remaining?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is currently comprised pulling CC 2, CC 3, CC 5, and CC 8.
Second that. Let's vote. It's unanimous? Okay. I guess David Paul, CC 3.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Before I get started, I hope everybody watched the Super Bowl, and I hope you saw Lady Gaga sing the National Anthem. She knocked it out of the park, and I was sitting there crying like a baby. I love this country, and that just made me understand how much. That's why I oppose this new ordinance you're proposing about the cemeteries. It's just goes against the spirit of America. I've said before, these people are dead, and I was thinking about all the heinous people I've known in my life, and I've had the misfortune to meet a couple of serial killers when I worked in prison, and Richard Speck was the kind of guy, I've only twice in my life just wanted to kill somebody with my bare hands. Richard Speck was one of those guys, I was alone in a room with him, and I still have mixed emotions of whether I should have just snapped his neck, but I didn't.
What are you running for?
He fit right in.
There's a lot of despicable people in this world, is my point, and, you know, we don't have to honor them with any more talk about their lives or their deeds. Mayor, I went online, and I was thinking about all the despicable people in history, all the mass murderers, presidential assassins, and I stopped on John Wilkes Booth. And if you think about it, John Wilkes Booth set civil rights and human rights in America back 100 years, so he would be probably the most despicable person that I can imagine that's done the most harm. And Mayor, I brought this, I printed it on both sides, so the people in the back can see it, but that's the tombstone on the John Wilkes Booth family plot. He's not buried right under this stone, his name is on it, but they haven't had any trouble, people come and lay pennies there, you know, it's just a sad tradition, but if we can let John Wilkes Booth have a tombstone, we can let people who did heinous crimes just be buried anonymously in a plot. And I don't think that it's good for our city to promote this. It looks like hatred to people, and they can make a good point, so I would advise against this ordinance. Thank you.
Michael Reeves?
Mayor Paris, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know, I think this is one of the most important things that I've ever spoken to you about in all the years I've been up here, almost six years. And this has to do with the security of our city. Are we exposing ourselves to retaliation by bad people? And it's possible. These people are not rational. They don't mind dying. And remember this, if there's an incident in this city, it will not be your children who will be fighting to save our city. It will be someone else's children and law enforcement that will be saving our city. Remember that. And it also, it could be you and me who are the victims of retaliation. We do not have to go this way. We can go a positive way. Yes, we vented our feelings on this, but we can be positive. We can offer workshops like the Sheriff's Department has available to prepare people for life. They say there is going to be another shooting. They don't say if, when, they say there will be another shooting. We need to prepare as human beings. We can't change the past, but we can prepare for the future. And we can also not expose the safety and security of this city in our anger at what has occurred. Thank you.
Maria Zano?
Yes.
Don't you love that roundabout?
What?
Don't you just love that roundabout?
Oh, the roundabout?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, we, oh, I thought it was CC 3.
No, I got you down for 5. We can talk about 3. Want to talk about 3?
Well, yeah.
That's a more fun thing to talk about.
Well, I can talk about CC 3 for a minute.
Okay.
As far as who now maintains the cemeteries and the, and the morgues and stuff in town, I'm a little concerned with that, because I don't understand why anybody from the school district would have control over the morgues in town. Everybody's looking at me like I'm, why, why is that?
I don't think they are.
In the ambulance services, yeah. Yeah?
I don't think so.
From Lancaster School District, yeah. Yeah, it was up here before, and I've talked about it a couple other times. I mean, that to me is just, I don't understand that, why that would be so.
You know what you're talking about?
No, it's, it's not just a possibility, it is.
That was a property exchange where a former mortuary that the city was in possession of was sold to the school district or traded to the school district. It's no longer operating as a mortuary.
Well, I want to know why the ambulances and stuff have the name on the side as well of the person.
I don't know, I tried to get them to put my name on the side of the ambulances, but they wouldn't do it.
Well, I'm just saying, some of these ambulances come in, and they don't even have their lights on or anything, and, you know, that's, I mean, to me, that's an area of concern as to why that's so, and who, why is somebody making those kind of decisions on? When I worked for the school district before, at Lincoln Elementary, I was given notices that said if there was any, ever any kind of disaster or anything there, like planned for it, because they were going to use the schools there as morgues as well, and I mean, they gave me the paperwork for it at the school district, and I was like, what, tow, where the tow, the bags and the tow, you know, the tow tags would be and everything, and where, you know, which sections were going to be for the hospital area, and that was at Lincoln, but I'm concerned more with the downtown area over there, with the morgue situation and the ambulance, and why they would be, as far as being in charge of kids, you know what I mean?
Sheldon's in charge of the morgue.
Okay, well, anyway. So, CC 5 now? Is that what we're on?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, I mean, it is, it says to protect public health and safety, I mean, I don't know if that's the case. If it's protecting public health and safety.
Thank you, Maria.
I think, okay, so CC 5?
Thank you.
You're gonna love that roundabout, trust me.
Oh, yeah.
You will. You're gonna love it. Thanks.
Well, I wanted to talk about stand.
I'll make a motion that we approve CC 2.
You're done.
CC 3. CC 5, and CC 8.
I will second that motion.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Thank you. You sure we couldn't just pass an ordinance that any terrorists have to go to the dump? The dump? Just a thought. All right. Amendment to Title 17 of the Lancaster Municipal Code, under New Business. Cards?
Several.
So, Mr. Durick, are you presenting? No, Jocelyn's presenting, right?
We're co-presenting.
You know, Jocelyn, by this time, you ought to be able to do it by yourself.
He won't let me go, I'm sorry, your honor. Good evening. You have before you Urgency Ordinance 1012, an ordinance to amend the city zoning regulations by adding a new section to Chapter 17.04 of the Municipal Code. Will expressly prohibit the establishment and operation of medical marijuana dispensaries, the delivery of medical marijuana, and the indoor and outdoor cultivation of marijuana anywhere in the city. The ordinance was drafted in response to three pieces of legislation that the governor signed in late 2015, collectively called the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. The act became effective January 1, 2016. The purpose of the act is to provide a statewide program for the licensing and regulation of commercial cannabis activity, specifically the operation of medical marijuana dispensaries and the delivery and cultivation of marijuana. The act expressly provides that cities may exercise local control to either regulate medical marijuana businesses or to prohibit such activities altogether. However, the act contained two provisions that potentially jeopardized local control and gave rise to the need for this urgency ordinance. The first provided that if a city or county did not have a zoning ordinance expressly addressing cultivation, the state would become the sole licensing authority for that activity effective March 1, 2016. Fortunately, last Wednesday, the governor signed urgency legislation to eliminate that deadline. The other provision, however, does remain in effect, and it provides that if a city does not have an ordinance in effect that expressly bans medical marijuana delivery, before the state begins issuing dispensary and delivery licenses, the state will be the sole regulatory body, and delivery will be allowed with just a state license. While it's not immediately clear how soon the state will be ready to issue licenses, they are moving forward with implementing the act, and it is my understanding that the city is already receiving inquiries about dispensary and cultivation licensing. Therefore, staff believes it is essential that the city move quickly to have express regulations in effect immediately. Staff is recommending that Section 17.04.235 be added to the Municipal Code to expressly prohibit the establishment and operation of dispensaries, including mobile dispensaries, the indoor and outdoor cultivation of marijuana, and the delivery of marijuana anywhere within the city's boundaries. Adoption of the ordinance now retains local control over these activities. It's important to note that in recommending the prohibition of marijuana dispensaries and related activities, staff is making no judgment whatsoever on whether individuals may obtain some medical benefit from marijuana. The sole purpose of the ordinance is to protect Lancaster residents, business owners, and visitors from the detrimental secondary effects that such activities can create, specifically criminal activity revolving around the cultivation, delivery, and sales of marijuana, which is estimated to be a $700 million a year industry that is run almost exclusively on cash. Lee's available to speak in greater detail about some of the specific and very recent crimes that have occurred locally and that directly relate to the medical marijuana industry. Adoption of the ordinance now will allow the city to retain local control while providing time to assess whether regulations can be developed that would allow commercial medical marijuana activities to be conducted in a manner that's safe and responsible, and that protects public health, safety, and welfare from the adverse secondary effects of such activities. For that reason, staff is further recommending that you direct us to work with the Planning Commission and the Criminal Justice Commission to analyze and consider whether such regulations can be carefully crafted to accomplish these goals. Both the Planning Commission and the Criminal Justice Commission unanimously voted to recommend that you adopt this urgency ordinance.
Thank you.
And I think something, as we presented before, and Jocelyn spoke about, because the federal government doesn't recognize California's marijuana initiative, that they also control the banking and the support of the banks nationally, so this is a cash-and-carry business, and that has led to them being a target for criminal activity. Just locally, in the last two years, we've had nine incidents that revolved around marijuana delivery from a dispensary or an actual dispensary where people were injured and required law enforcement response. Recently, after just the last Criminal Justice Commission meeting, we had a discussion about regarding this ordinance, and the next day, the Lank, the Little Rock dispensary was robbed, and a employee was shot. So, just alone, you can see in Los Angeles typically, it's just even if you Google marijuana dispensaries or delivery, you can bring up several incidents in a local Southern California area where this has become an issue. Again, I want to reiterate what Jocelyn said, we're not, as staff, we're not forming an opinion whether there's a medical purpose for marijuana, merely putting ourselves in a position of being in front of this as it moves forward through the legislature, and quite frankly, the state has not indicated any of, any issue or any idea how that regulation is going to look moving forward. So, again, I think it's advantageous at this point, just based on issues that are related to this type of business, and the, more so on the federal government's level of how they view that, the impact that can have on us here locally.
And it's important to note that the ordinance does exempt certain persons from being covered under the ordinance. Patients and primary caregivers who actually qualify as primary caregivers under the State Health and Safety Code. We've also carved out an exemption for pharmacies, should they want to engage in this activity, although frankly, I think there might be a problem with the federal issue, but, so there, so there is still an avenue for people who get relief from medical marijuana to obtain it lawfully and not in violation of this ordinance.
I see the wheels turning. Well, any questions? Any thoughts?
Not yet.
What was that city I sent you the article on?
Talking to me?
Yeah. You really have to start reading my emails. I am the mayor, you know.
I read them all, there's so many. What was the article about?
There's some, I thought it was Palm Springs, but I could be wrong. There's some city that is recognizing that this is what the people want, and so what they're doing is they're authorizing hydroponic farms that are going to bring in major employment into this, into the area, a major tax base, and that they're going to regulate it. You know, like the issue of the cash, we make an ordinance, can't buy it with cash, have to do it with credit cards or bank transfers. There's a lot we could do, and if we got in front of it, in front of it, it is actually a way of increasing employment. It's also a way of increasing the amount of money we have for law enforcement, because we tie a lot of the licensing around what type of law enforcement they have to pay for. I just don't think we should run from this, because it doesn't matter what we think. It doesn't matter what we feel about it. This is the law, this is the change. We can jump ahead of it, use it to our benefit, or not, and I'm, well, obviously, you can tell what I'm thinking, but I really think it's something that perhaps the city ought to decide before we just become the victim of it, because Marvin just showed me the phone of the dispensaries that are within walking distance. I mean, it's not like we're, well, okay, maybe you gotta drive, but, but they're, they're, they're advertising on the internet where they are. Why not just regulate it and make the money and create the jobs? Unless somebody, you know, I'd really like somebody to give me a reason not to.
I'll give you a couple.
Okay.
Number one.
Number one, you can't force them to use a money order because, because the banks won't recognize them, because it's a federal problem with the banks recognizing pot, correct? That they cannot do it, they cannot open a bank account if they're a dispensary.
You can't open a bank account and say, "I'm a dispensary and I'm selling marijuana."
You, you can, because someone in the audience showed me that, or told me that you can, but you have the possibility of it closing on you, so it still would remain.
You can open any account under any DVA, but whether it's legitimate or not is an issue.
Correct.
Look, in five years, we're gonna be buying it in Costco. Well, I'm not gonna be buying it, but Marvin might. It's gonna be available in Costco. I just think we should be progressive about this and decide how best to benefit the city. And I think we ought to think about that.
I think the, the, the state, all, all we're doing with this ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, but all we're doing with this ordinance is we're saying we want local control, and then we're gonna go back to the Criminal Justice and the Planning Commission and have that discussion. So with this ordinance, all we're doing is saying, "Local control, we'll do it, and then we'll decide what to do later," and we'll send it back to the Criminal Justice, and we'll send it back to planning.
Exactly, correct.
Okay. I like it. All right, Fran, come on up here, help me out here. Tell Marvin to be nice to me, that this is a good idea.
Okay.
That's a great idea, Marvin's got a great idea.
Again.
I agree with you.
Wait a minute, listen to this, you're gonna love this. The Sheriff's Boosters runs it, and all the money has to go to law enforcement.
The what?
What do you think? I want you to call the sheriff when you get, when you get done from the meeting, see what he thinks, okay? Thanks. All right, go on.
Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, and ladies and gentlemen, yes, I agree with you, and I agree on the presentation of giving us a time, we have to file something before March the first, otherwise the state takes it over. And the reason I'm kind of saying this in more in a layman's situation, because this is what I was trying to do last week, is because people won't understand this, they're gonna say, "Well, Mayor Paris wants control over everything in the City of Lancaster," okay?
Well, it's true, I do, but these guys won't let me, so.
But, the thing of it is, it is, it'll give Lanc, the City of Lancaster a chance to digest this and, and, and put it in the avenues that it needs to be, so that we, if it does pass in the future, and we do allow some of them to go through, we can get the monetary monies and taxes back into the City of Lancaster, and I think, I think it's a good deal. And I, and as far as the medical part of it, that will never go away, because there's always, and I'm sure even our mayor will find a way of getting medical marijuana to the medic, to the medical people that need it, and I appreciate, thank you very much.
Thank you, although Lee does that.
Okay, Lee, good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran. David Paul.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening again. Mayor, I was glad to hear your progressive stance. You know, Prop two fifteen twenty years ago was the first in the nation, and it was called the Compassionate Use Act. Now, I realize that we've been stung on Prop forty-seven Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, that turned out to be nothing but that, but the Compassionate Use Act, that's pretty self-explanatory. And as I'm reading through here, you've written that you would consider carefully crafted that would allow commercial marijuana, medical marijuana activity to occur in the city while protecting the public from the detrimental secondary effects, but everything written in here prohibits it completely, there is no legal way for anybody to get the medical marijuana they need in this ordinance. So I would ask you to carve out a provision for the dispensaries that are mobile. We had a very brave woman, and I think we'll hear from her tonight, come and tell you about her business, I think she pays taxes, Colorado now takes taxes, you're right, this is the future, people want it, somebody mentioned seventy million dollars, what's the tax on that at fifteen percent? And, you know, when we talk about crime, sure, it brings crime, but liquor stores and gas stations get robbed, and we're not gonna close them down, so I don't want that fear factor to cloud our decision, you know.
Don't be so sure about the liquor stores, but go on.
Yeah, well, if it were up to me, twenty-nine years of sobriety, I'd close them all. I've said that if people just smoked pot, that would be a much better world, but we're not gonna get there. So, what I wanna do is see our city not be so hard on people that need this compassion. People gain actual benefit from using medical marijuana, the science is in, and I, I, I just want us to be viewed as a compassionate city rather than trying to bring the whip down on, the horse is out of the barn, it's gone, marijuana will be legal in this state probably the first of next year, so let's get ahead of it, like you said, let's put something in place that doesn't restrict it completely, because people need it, and I wanna see the people who are entitled to have it legally and benefit from it to get it. Please, exercise compassion.
Thank you. Melanie Coker.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for saying those things. I've been here, I'm, this, eight years ago, this subject of regulation was brought up in this, this council, and we were told we would look into it, and now eight years has gone by, and here we are again, and now the urgency, well, the urgency's off for, for March first as of February third to do this ordinance, so we have till almost 2018 to get things in order, but hopefully it wouldn't be that long. You know, there are pros and cons in everything that we do, and we have certain rights to decide individually, you know, what we wanna do about it, but since we are not that little country town anymore, we need to move on, and we have, I mean, we're the solar capital, we have large companies that are here, we have City of Hope, the Cancer Center, and we have many people here that, that have cancer and other diseases, and we can accommodate these people and that reside here and, and help them with their pain and suffering without calling the detrimental effects to our city, because if we stay in the black market, it is detrimental to our city now. So, I mean, and many states have mastered control, and I think we can too. And I've had a collective here, which I said at the Criminal Justice, I got braver this time, so let's have a brownie.
Sheldon, what is she talking about?
So, um.
I'm a little concerned here.
I forgot what I was gonna say.
She's a tad bit nervous during her presentation.
I got nervous on the, on the one over there.
She did.
I got a little braver today. So I've had a, I have had a collective here for the past eight years. I may not have been supposed to.
Hey, careful.
But I am appointment only.
Hey, careful, you got cops behind you.
Well, I know that, they were there last time.
She held a map up last time.
And I'm appointment only, and I only deal with, I, I don't have any youth who come to my collective, it is appointment only, I only know the people that come there, they call me first. I've helped so many patients at the Antelope Valley Cancer Center and City of Hope, my brochures are at Radiation and the Chemotherapy Center, and I, they come to me, and I help them, and I feel good about that I've, you know, that I've been able to do that. And so, what I'm saying is, since the way that I did my collective is totally different than anybody else out there. I don't have kids in, like I told you, I don't have kids in the parking lot, you know, coming in and getting marijuana, going back into the car, selling it to the friends, and running down the street, I don't do that, I don't have that, I don't want that. So, my daughter was diagnosed with cancer three weeks ago, and it's really, really awful now for me, you know, and yesterday, she's thirty-five, but I gave her a lollipop, and her face brought tears to my eyes, because there was so much calmness in her face, and we have a lot to face at City of Hope and UCLA and these places that we have to go, I, she's gonna have to get a stem cell transplant, but that lollipop meant a lot to her, that's all I can say.
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you. Michael Reeves. And I'm, Melanie, I'm sorry about your daughter.
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen, my condolences and sympathy to the lady that just spoke. My parents and most of my family are devastated and died from cancer, and I worked with cancer patients for thirteen years at the VA Medical Center. We had anywhere between one thousand and two thousand patients at a time, plus their families, et cetera. I can only recall one patient that asked a doctor to write a prescription for marijuana, and that patient still had to get the hard cancer drugs to survive, and eventually she deceased. No, I, I don't favor this, and with all respects to the gentle lady, she's seen patients from the Cancer Center and City of Hope and all these other places, anybody that's getting a Schedule One drug needs to be monitored. No legitimate doctor would send a patient to some dispensary to get a drug without following them up on a routine basis, I, I've never heard that in all the years. I know that veterans had come in and they wanted to transfer their care from private to the VA, just to get medication, and the doctors told them that, you know, you have to be seen exclusively at the VA before we can follow you, and that's a misgiving, and you do not know the purity of this drug, and I, I don't want it sold in this town. This is one time I agree with the council, we should prohibit this dispensaries in this city, and it's gonna be a constitutional issue eventually, because it's a, it's a federal crime right now, and Supreme Court will just have to rule whether the national government has precedent over the state and local. So, no, let's, don't have any dispensaries in Lancaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Zink.
Good evening. My problem with the ordinance is that it was done without any stakeholders' input. There are no people on the Criminal Justice Commission who deal with alcohol, marijuana, or smoke shops, and I think that there needs to be people appointed to the commission who represents those people, since those are the people that we're regulating, just makes common sense. It'd be great to have her input, Melanie's input, on the commission. What happened in Little Rock was, it was being run by a group of felonies, right? Felons. We want to raise the bar on these establishments, we don't want them to be ghetto places, we want them to be establishments. You know, they're, the owners of these convenience stores and bars and stuff, they all have dreams just like us, they wanna send their kids to college and have them get a better life, so they're the small mom and pop people that are, you know, striving to be somebody. You know, like this is a seven hundred million dollar, dollar industry, you're right, Paris, I agree with you, that we need to get ahead of this, this is gonna be legal, and we need to be positive, not criminalize it. I would like Lancaster, Lancaster to sponsor an Antelope Valley Alcohol, Tobacco, and Marijuana Association, where all these businesses throughout the Antelope Valley can join, and we could educate them to help educate the public, so we raise the bar, how we can clean up their stores to make them look nicer, everything, we can do a lot of positive things, but we have to look at these people not as in the shadows and stuff, but make them a part of our community, because they are a part of our community. We should call the Criminal Justice Commission, the Criminal Justice Prevention and Education Commission, so we don't target criminalization, but we target more education and crime prevention. And, uh... That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Sheldon Bloom. You don't look like a pothead.
I'm sorry?
You don't look like a pothead.
Pothead, I'm not, but I am for the legalization, cultivation of marijuana. I find it surprising that the sole purpose of the ordinance is to protect Lancaster residents, business owners, and visitors from what is said to be the detrimental secondary effects of these activities, however, we already have thirty-five states that have legalized marijuana in some form or another, including Washington DC. I would also submit that marijuana has substantial medical purposes, specifically, it treats glaucoma. Marijuana can be used to treat the eye disease, glaucoma, because it, which increases the pressure in the eyeball, this reduces the slow progression of the disease. It also controls epileptic seizures. There's the ingredient of THC that controls the seizure by binding the brain cells responsible for controlling the excitability and the regula, and the regulation of, regulating relaxation. We know from Sanjay Gupta's interview with the CJ family, the five-year-old daughter who uses the medical strain of THC and CBD, this is someone who has the Dravet syndrome, which causes seizures and severe developmental delays. According to the film, she was having seizures about three hundred a week. By taking marijuana, it was reduced down to one every seven days. We also know that marijuana stops cancer cells from spreading, specifically breast cancer, and specifically brain tumors, so we have a trap.
Let me interrupt you for a second. That ship has sailed with us. The state has passed it. It's legal. I don't care why it's legal, it's legal, I believe in states' rights. If the state of California wants this to be a legal substance that can be sold, I'm okay with that. Eight years ago, I was concerned about the medical benefits of it, but it's, that ship has sailed, this is what the people of California want. Your time would be better spent working with the Planning Commission and the Criminal Justice Commission to figure out how we can maximize the benefit to the City of Lancaster if we regulated this in a fashion that no one else is.
Well, I'd be more than happy to do that. Specifically, I flew in from San Jose today, I'm only speaking three minutes, but I've been an overland landowner for thirty-one years, I have a hundred and fifty acres on Avenue J and Seventieth East, and I would like to cultivate in that location. I'd also submit that I would be willing to dedicate an acre to the police department and an acre for the fire department right, right alongside of my property.
They're, they're not that far along with this yet. They're coming, but they're not there yet.
Well, if the purpose is to protect the residents, I think you're overlooking those that.
No, I, I'm, I'm serious about this, I, I really think that this is an opportunity that we should look at, and, and, you know, once the, once the state has spoken, they've spoken, and it's, you know, if, if they had gone the other way, I'd go the other way with them.
Well, we have people before us that seem to be alarmist, and I don't wanna drive that red, you know, ridge into this community. I, I'm an attorney myself, I've been practicing for thirty-eight years in, in personal injuries, so I'm pretty familiar with the disability aspect.
Were you able to work out that ambulance thing?
Well, I heard you say that, and I also saw your names on signs, so I know you're pretty good at that, but I'd be more than happy to work with the city or Criminal Justice Department.
We're gonna take your up on that, get his card, but I...
Provide you with my card.
I mean, that's, and then if the council wants to do it, they'll do it, if they don't wanna do it, they don't wanna do it, but what I'm not going to do is turn back the clock on this, you know, and what's more, the city's used to me doing weird stuff.
I would only, I'd only add that when you get older with Alzheimer's, with dementia, this is what helps slow the progression of that, so I mean, there's, there's a wide range of benefits, and if it's properly regulated, this should be a very smooth transition. The community has a perfect weather zone for it, and there's a lot of rural areas that wouldn't interfere with schools or...
Hey, we used to grow a lot of alfalfa.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that what they called it back then? Who would you like me to leave my card with?
The city manager, if you would.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You said properly regulated. Isn't it properly regulated to be in a pharmacy, wouldn't that be the proper... Wouldn't that be the proper place for it to be?
Well, no, that's just a source where you can obtain it. To have it regulated, I'm talking about cultivation.
So everything else that you've been talking about, everything that you've been comparing it to, is prescribed from a pharmacy?
From a physician, that you can acquire it from the pharmacy. That's true.
Okay, but isn't that the proper place? Shouldn't that be the proper place to acquire it?
No. There's dispensaries that can be controlled through the referral of a physician. And pharmacies is just one aspect of a dispensary. It's not... It shouldn't be the ultimate or the exclusive source.
What other drugs besides alcohol is dispensed outside a pharmacy?
All kinds of things. Pasco, everything over the counter.
Aspirin.
It's over the counter, it's...
I mean, there's... This is something which has become a medical necessity. It's not a drug of choice, it's a drug of necessity at this time.
Well, wait a minute.
I believe so.
For some people it is.
Yes.
For the vast majority of people using this, it's a drug of choice. And I'm just not getting into that debate. All I'm saying is that if the law's changed and the people of the state of California have changed that law, then that's what we live with. We don't act like it doesn't exist.
Well, the word "medical" is in front of the word "marijuana," and that's the...
Yeah, but we all know that was kind of a...
Eventually, it'll become recreational. There's no question about it. But I don't wanna lose track that the first step is the medical aspect, and I think that's what we're all concerned here for.
Okay. Anyway, give your card to Mark.
Yes, sir.
Don't let him scare you.
Oh, okay.
I think what I'm hearing in the vast majority of the comments is exactly what you just iterated, that the medical part is the concern. And I think Ms. Corbett stated very succinctly that those with the medical need are protected with this ordinance. And let me say something about the ordinance. The ordinance is not saying no, period. The ordinance is saying no right now till we can figure it all out. It's a pause, more so than a no. And it's going to take some time to work through those things to balance the federal laws against the state laws and the community need. That is, all this is doing is giving us our opportunity to work through the hurdles, to come up with a method to make something happen that everybody can live with.
I think what you're saying is you're trying to create a wheel, and there's already 35 states that already have that wheel. So if you adopt the resolution of the other 35 states, you would save maybe years of time.
Depending on the council's decision, that may in fact be one of the methods that are used to come up with what works for us.
Yeah, but I don't want you to think that we have to do committee meetings and, you know, have discussions. I think it's already past that. I think we can adopt someone else's stated ordinance in this way and conform it to the needs of the public. So I submit that you have a good point, but I think we're five years ahead of that.
Thank you. Christopher Clark.
My name is Christopher Clark. Somebody very close to me has been battling cancer ever since I was born. They've been through chemotherapy three times, and I've been by their side as I had to watch the pain, as they had to get up and work to support the family. And I thank God that they're alive. I also thank medical marijuana, because some of the properties in marijuana, such as CBD, they attach to our natural CBD reflectors, and that's what helps with pain and to bring comfort for people suffering from such illnesses. On October 9th of last year, California passed a three bills. It's gonna allow a system to govern medical marijuana. There's gonna be 17 different licenses. Each person can only get two licenses when that system comes out. Now, California has also gave cities the right to choose if they would allow it in their city or not. If you were to allow medical marijuana, you could operate under all 17 different categories for the next 10 years until 2026. At that time, it would be grandfathered into the system as is. That means we have a whole decade to build something vast and magnificent. I've been in the medical marijuana industry for eight years, over eight years. I decided to make my career in this industry. I believe in it. I know it from the ground up, and I think it is an industry of the future. All I ask for is a chance, a chance to show that the plan I have in my mind, if we could make it work, I think there's great things we could do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. 90 days, have a plan, one way or the other. Either we're not gonna allow it at all, or we're gonna have a plan as to how we're gonna deal with it. But I don't want eight years to go by.
Would you be okay if we worked it through the Criminal Justice and Planning Commission?
Of course, that's how I want you to do it. I want you to do it through Criminal Justice and Planning. But if we're gonna do it, I want a viable plan that is going to substantially increase the welfare of this community. All right? Thank you. Is that okay with you guys?
Let's do that.
Good. Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We adopt ordinance number 1012. Introduce the ordinance and direct staff to work with the Planning Commission and Criminal Justice Commission.
Second?
I have a second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on. New Business Item Two. Mr. Durico, you're back on the light.
Was I out of the light, sir? Mark, what are you worried about? It's all good. All right. All right. Thank you, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, and council members and commission members. Giving you an update here as it relates to an ordinance that the city council pushed through last year and voted for regarding Prop 47 and an administrative citation program. First of all, I'd like to just give some background as it relates to Prop 47's initiative. Back in November of 2014, we've had a year now to... over a year now to look at its cause and effect in communities. And what I have is just from the Sheriff's Department for the first 12 months of its inception on how it's impacted crime. And what people need to understand is this initiative took a lot of crimes that were typically wobblers. They could be either charged as a misdemeanor or felony. It reduced them to straight misdemeanors, especially as it relates to narcotics offenses for simple possession. Those were all regulated to misdemeanor offenses. And what has happened now is, under the old guise as it related to narcotics, people were afforded a Prop 36 motion, three bites of the apple, for drug diversion and rehabilitation. And the biggest impact we're seeing is there is no incentive for that now based on this new law. So I'm gonna give you some statistics first just for the five stations in the North Division of the Sheriff's Department. In the North Division alone, there have been 3,563 arrests that were Prop 47-based. So these were all crimes that typically could have been charged as felonies, now have been reduced to misdemeanors. Of those, 3,563 arrests, 2,640 of those were narcotics-related. And I'll tell you a little bit later why that's significant. Of those cases, the arrests involved 1,026 individuals who are repeat offenders. And the interesting part of this statistic is for the repeat offenders were responsible for 2,248 of the original 3,500 crimes. So the other issue with this is that people can be rearrested over and over and over again for the same charge with no enhanced penalty beyond the scope of what that typical case is. Why that's important? In the first year, there were 3,700 inmates alone that were... had their cases reduced and were released from state prison. So if you think about that now, those 3,700 individuals, if they go out and commit another crime that falls under Prop 47, they can only be held accountable based on that misdemeanor, not for their prior record. So that's significant. Also, on a local level, just at our own station, in that first 12 months, 618 arrests were related to Prop 47 arrests. Of those... or, excuse me, 818 arrests, of those 618 were narcotics offenders. Of those total arrests, 250 were repeat offenders that caused 540 different incidents of the crime of that 818. So the repeat offender issue is starting to come through. There's also been provided information that Mr. Bozegan has provided to you as we get these Prop 47 updates of cases that are kind of interesting. We had one individual here in Los Angeles County who didn't start becoming a criminal until Prop 47 passed, and he regularly steals bicycles that are under a value of $950. There's other case study where another individual actually goes into the market with a calculator and to ensure that he doesn't steal anything over a value of $950, so he can't be charged with a felony. So there's some issues as it relates to that. Now, being proactive is that our mayor and council are here in this city. We adopted that ordinance last year. We implemented it after vetting it through Los Angeles County, the District Attorney's Office, working with the Public Defender's Office, as well as the Sheriff's Department. And we developed a program that we tested in a large retail store in two of their stores here locally. In the last four months of the year, there were over 100 incidents of petty theft. Based on our ordinance, only 26 of those required a sheriff response, which has a significant impact on resource management. Of those, only 13 individuals were arrested, and those 26 were required because the scope of the crime went beyond just the petty theft. That left 72 individuals had committed that theft that were now processing through our ordinance. So they will be cited and processed through our municipal ordinance and receive a fine of $500 for first offense. Any second offense requires $1,000 after that point. So as we're moving forward, an interesting phenomenon we had happen for our January statistics of those two stores, only required six reported incidents of cases there, and only two resulted in arrest from the Sheriff's Department. The rest will be managed through our ordinance program. So we're already seeing the fruits of our labor as far as a deterrent. And again, you know, there's other issues that we implement too through our Business Improvement Group program and those things as well, and through Business Watch. But on the test side of this, this is... looks like it's doing exactly what it was intended. A concern that Mark discussed with me was is, you know, we wanna stay on top of these cases. So as we expand this program, you can see the resource issue on the city side as far as managing and vetting those cases and moving them forward properly. Any questions?
I do. You wanna talk a little bit about the... I lost my train of thought.
Large party gatherings?
The what?
Large party gatherings?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good one. Okay. I'm sorry for that. Sorry, I left that out. We also apply this ordinance as it relates to large-party gatherings that require a sheriff response. As of the implementation of that, we've cited 27 individuals for that large-party issue, creating those disturbances. So far, we only have two contestments as it relates to all 27 of those citations. So folks are actually coming in and paying the citation, and we're not seeing a repeat issue there as well.
At the Criminal Justice Commission, they had a statistic that said that there were about 3,500 felonies filed in the Antelope Valley in 2014. In 2015, there was 2,800. So they're saying violent crime is next to Part I crime. So is crime up or crime down?
Well, it depends on how you look at it, okay? I would say, you know, we can have a discussion for hours on the FBI reporting mandate for Part I crimes. I would say as far as felony filings, they're down as a direct cause as it relates to this proposition moving forward. You can look at that a couple different ways, and there's argument on both sides of the aisle on that. If... And again, I think the biggest concern we have as a community should be the fact that the majority of our crime is larcenies, okay? Theft-related crime. And statistically, I can promise you, I can guarantee this as a former narcotics detective, that most larcenies have a direct link to narcotics.
Thank you. Maria Pizano, is she still here?
No.
She's left? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to receive and file.
Is there a second?
Second then.
All in favor? I mean, well, let's vote.
We're gonna vote?
Unanimous. I don't think we really have to vote on that. NB3. Barbara Poswell, where are you? There you are.
Evening again, mayor and members of the city council. The item before you at this time is consideration of approval of the fiscal year 2015-16 media budget adjustment. Typically, as we go through the year, we will review our assumptions made in revenues and look at what unanticipated expenditures have taken place. Over the last several years, our assumptions or the actuals as we move along didn't really change much, and we haven't come before you with a major adjustment. This year, however, is different. We do have what we believe to be significant enough adjustments to bring before you at this time, but they're good news. When we developed our revenue picture for the current fiscal year, we had to make some assumptions, particularly in terms of the economy. I'm happy to say that the assessed valuation, which is the market value of homes, has actually come in higher than what we anticipated, which then translates to higher property tax revenues to the city. Most of the revenue adjustments that are before you are related to that, as well as the payment from the county of the administrative fees that they took from us in error in the lawsuit or the action we took against them that resulted in them paying us that money. And we did actually receive that payment from them.
Barbara, when they steal our money, it's not in error. Go on.
In terms of the expenditure side, we had the response to the storms that obviously was not part of our budget, and that we incurred a cost to do repairs related to the storm and preventative actions and emergency-related activities. We also have some other items that we're proposing to add to our budget for this year that we feel are... should be added prior to the end of the fiscal year. This will set the stage for us to move forward in developing our budget for next fiscal year, and we will look at where we are financially and then look at what changes need to be made for the next year. But this is just for this year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you. Michael Reeves?
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I was looking at this, and it says reprogramming neighborhood stabilization income. And going back to CC8, the Housing Department under the Neighborhood Stabilization Program is gonna spend $338,750 plus a 10% contingency to remodel three homes. Three homes. And one of the homes is on West Avenue J 11, and they're gonna do rehab work. And I know that, looking at the real estate section of the paper, plus my own personal knowledge, the homes on that block are probably worth $150,000. So... And there's two other homes involved using stabilization money. So we're gonna spend $100,000 to remodel each house. And as a result of that, then our budget gets out of whack in the Neighborhood Stabilization income. I don't think that's very wise. You spend the money and then you lose it, and you're gonna spend it on homes that you can't recoup that money because they can't be sold for more than $140,000, $150,000. So, you know, I just think we need to think about this neighborhood stabilization, how it affects our income as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Do we need a motion? Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve NB3.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Are there council reports already? Okay, council reports. CR1.
Mayor Paris, I was able to give my update at the last council meeting, so no news
We are still at the table and deciding where those, when and how those funds are going to be dispersed.
We're going to get it or not?
We hope to get it. Yes, we will. We're, what's going on is that there is a, a claim of approximately $500,000 that they are holding the funds up to pay out from that original amount. So it was thought that we could put the, they could put the funds in an escrow account, put it to the site so that we can move forward. And that would be what Vice Mayor Chris and I and the other people that are involved wanted to decide upon. So at that particular time, we're waiting for the county to get back to us, to get the final disbursement done.
Roundabouts?
I think Ken wanted to put the money from the Sanitation District towards roundabouts. Didn't you?
Really? I thought, I thought I said that I wanted to give the money back out of the Sanitation District.
Okay.
Not build roundabouts with it.
We need those roundabouts.
I know we do.
Find us the money. All right. Anyone else? We're good? Let's move on. City Manager, any announcements?
Yes, four things, two announcements, two videos. First, I think a lot of times we in this industry and community sometimes tend to focus on the negative, and we need to look all around us at history. History is being made every day, and good things are happening. Two examples this week. We had Todd Davis, who was percolate high school, who is now a Super Bowl champion. He was on the Broncos. He stood at the coin flip between Peyton Manning and Von Miller at the coin flip at the Super Bowl, and he's a Super Bowl champion, and that's someone from the Antelope Valley. So that's a wonderful accomplishment, and he's earned it, two years out of Sac State. Jason and I had the opportunity to go to Northrup. They had a celebration of the long-range strike bomber, and it was inspiring beyond belief to watch what's being built right here in the Antelope Valley, designed and built in the Antelope Valley. The most advanced airplane ever designed and ever built is going to be built here, and it was just truly inspiring and amazing. That's happening right here in the Antelope Valley. Speaking of history, we have two things. The first video we're going to show you is the first incubator facility for lease in the Antelope Valley. Mr. Tim McBride, who owns the cinema on the Boulevard there, is completely redoing his building to include an incubator and some very creative space. The video was taken before it was open, that's why you see no one in there, but this is to show what's possible. So that's the first video, and this is on the cinemas at the Boulevard.
Today, we're in the heart of downtown Lancaster at the Boulevard Cinemas, where they have recently announced that they will be opening office space for their business incubator program. So Tim, tell me a little bit about the business incubator program.
The incubator program started off as a way to utilize the space that we had available on the second floor of our building. We were really searching for a way to create a business in the building that made sense with the theater, the first floor, and that brought some energy to the building as well as foot traffic to the downtown area.
So what is your target audience with this program?
Well, generally speaking, the incubators actually appeal to the college graduates with degrees in either computer engineering, marketing, and higher science degrees. Those people who work from their home, from their kitchen counters, who typically work out of their phones. And the neat thing about this type of workspace is, is you can have someone who's developing phone apps, working alongside someone who has a new idea of reaching a completely untapped market through graphic design, and they together can collaborate on projects and develop a synergy amongst themselves.
So let's talk a little bit about the design and your inspiration here.
The idea behind the room, thematically speaking, is monopoly. And so we thought it would be fun and a little more energetic to copy that theme in here without really copying the game. And so the incubator loco is really a play on the monopoly man. But because we're an incubator and we want people to be thinking outside of the egg, we actually put the raptor inside of an egg, breaking out of an egg on his way to an IPO.
So what are these on the walls? I'm noticing all these stylized quotes.
These represent the monopoly tiles, and what we wanted to do was keep something in the room that kept the creative mind thinking and kept a positive motivation. And this was just a way to not, to let the energy in the building stall. We have a newsstand downstairs now. We've got some new retail coming in. We have an internet cafe coming online next week, as well as a new Groundworks Organic Coffee. And so those things in conjunction with the theaters and the incubator create a really unique synergy in the building that has all the necessary amenities and a really neat attraction.
What made you personally interested in this program and excited about this project?
The thing that was most appealing to me and my associates was the ability to interact with young entrepreneurs and young business owners, the opportunity for people with my experience have an opportunity to teach and mentor them.
We often forget sometimes that the Boulevard and businesses are made up where people like Tim has put his idea and put his money behind his idea. The second video you're going to see is our roundabout was, we had a opening today, grand opening. Councilmember Mann did an absolutely outstanding job representing the council there. You can tell that he truly believes in the benefits of the roundabout, and there are safety benefits. We forget that an intersection, a traditional intersection, has no physical barriers that stop a horrific crash. The only thing that stops it is driver behavior, stopping at a red light. A roundabout has a physical barrier that also provides safety. It's a really inspiring day, and Ken, thank you very much for that. We have a short video on that, and I'm sure Ken will probably want to say a few words afterwards.
This is a monumental day for the city of Lancaster. One of the things that obviously we're responsible for is traffic safety. And this intersection here is, unfortunately, it's got a history of fatalities. Most fatalities come from T-bone accidents, and it's just about virtually impossible for you to, to even have a T-bone accident at a roundabout. We know that we're moving into a safe era here for this particular intersection. It's also safe for pedestrians. A lot of people don't understand that the way in which most roundabouts are constructed, it's really friendly, pedestrian-safe. Again, I think this is going to give us the opportunity for people to get comfortable. It'll hopefully be a segue to more roundabouts in Lancaster. So one of the things that they didn't pick up on is, unfortunately, that intersection's got a history of fatalities. We've actually had three at that intersection historically, and two other serious crashes. And I truly believe sometimes there'd be some controversy about, well, why did we stick at it at, at Avenue L and 10th Street East? Well, I clearly think in the future, we just won't have fatalities there, and it'll give everybody an opportunity to experience a single-lane traffic circle, because there's a lot of controversy about stigma, about people don't like traffic circles. And usually that, where it comes into play, is when you've got multiple lanes, sometimes three and four lanes, coming into a traffic circle, and people are very uncomfortable. This is a single-lane traffic circle, so I think it's probably a good segue to get, get us started and get us going in the right direction. One of the things that we went through, the film clip there, it also has the turning, turning radius around the center of it. So sometimes there's discussion about how do you get a large vehicle through a single-lane traffic circle? And that actually allows the accommodation, whether it's a large truck, fire truck as an example, can easily traverse that, that traffic circle. So I think it was a great day for the city of Lancaster, and hopefully we'll get everybody experiencing a new way to look at how an intersection should be constructed, and, and at the same time, we'll be pedestrian-safe and reduce fatalities.
Thank you.
I may add, Mayor, that there will be a piece of public art that will be installed in April. It's a beautiful piece that pays homage to the aerospace industry.
That's that Statue of Marvin?
Did I say beautiful piece?
He's got Marvin with a cape on.
Now that'd be a sight, wouldn't it?
You all laugh.
Okay. Let the staff go while we do this. You good with that? You guys want to go home? Hey, we got a new guy. Who's the new guy?
We introduced him last time. They gave him a warmer welcome than that, though. That's Jeff Hogan. I won't go through all, but Jeff has done a great job in his first two weeks here, and he's going to be an asset to the city. Incredible asset.
I, I just don't waste a lot of energy on people till they've been around for a while, because, you know, never mind.
He'll get better, Jeff.
Welcome. All right. You guys can go. Just take three minutes. Go home. Be with your families. I know you want to listen to Michael Reeves again, but you can't. You'll have to do it for on the television.
No, no, no. It is getting better. It's just, you know, what this gets called. She's about to get on stage. She's about to get on stage. About to, about to. She's got it.
So how's your...
I think that's a few.
Same suspect.
Same one? No new one?
I guess asking, but they'll, they're holding three minutes. They're three minutes.
It's probably a little...
Exactly.
Take a break.
Take a break.
Okay.
He could hear.
I think we're just breaking.
The other.
The other.
The other.
The other.
Same issue.
I don't know.
I know where I, that you, you know what we talked about.
Right.
Finally.
That's the worst story I've ever seen in my 20 years here.
Picture for you.
Picture my color. What's wrong with my color?
Question for you.
Darn good-looking suit. It's a...
Really?
Yeah, it looks nice.
I'm not going to be calling you tonight.
You want me to call you?
No, I, I'm just asking.
Want to take off?
If it's seven o'clock, I'll go. I gotta kiss and everything later.
Take off.
I don't think I want to listen to you.
You know, meet him in the bathroom. I hear he does interesting things. Have you heard that story? Have you heard?
Jeff, thanks, Jeff. Thanks.
City Clerk.
This is the time to address the City Council Agency and Authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we start, let's give Todd Davis a key to the city and do something with him and the kids.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We've been in contact, and I know Deputy Mayor Monroe's been in contact with the family, and we're just working out his schedule. We're right behind him going to the White House and meeting the President. I'm sorry, I tried.
He wants to meet with the President before he meets with me?
I actually think it was up to him. He wanted me with you first, but his employer wants him to meet with the President.
Oh, okay. Deputy Mayor, make it happen, would you? Thank you. Michael Reeves.
Mayor Paris, council staff. We had a report last meeting on Medical Main Street, and I also addressed the hospital board, which I attend regularly, and I also addressed the hospital finance committee meetings, which I attend also. And I also mentioned this to the former CEO, and I have also mentioned it to the current president of electoral management, in the presence of the new CEO. And the bottom line is, before we proceed with Medical Main Street, we need to work with the people in the neighborhood that live around that area. I'm convinced that Medical Main Street is the salvation of this city. You know, there's going to be 5,000 to 7,000 people working in medical buildings there, and that's a lot of money, that's a lot of jobs for the city. But we need to be conscious of the people who live around that area. Some of the people in that area have lived in their homes since the neighborhood was developed, and you can imagine the construction that's going to go on and the noise and confusion over the next few years. And I've asked the, the hospital people to, and now I'm asking the city in the meetings to form a group and work with the people in the neighborhood, because I don't believe it's fair.
I think we're just breaking.
That's the worst story ever I've ever seen in my 20 years here. Picture my color. What's wrong with my color? Question for you. A darn good-looking suit. So... Really? Ah, looks nice. I'm not going to be calling you tonight. You want me to call you? No, I'm just asking. Want to take off? If it's seven o'clock, I'll go. I gotta kiss and everything later. Meet him in the bathroom. I hear he does interesting things. Have you heard that story? Have you heard?
Jeff, thanks, Jeff, thanks.
City Clerk.
This is the time to address the City Council Agency and Authority on Non-Agendized Matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we start, let's give Todd Davis a key to the city and do something with him and the kids.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We've been in contact, and I know Deputy Mayor Monroe's been in contact with the family, and we're just working out his schedule. We're right behind him going to the White House and meeting the President. I'm sorry, I tried.
He wants to meet with the President before he meets with me?
I actually think it was up to him. He wanted me with you first, but his employer wants him to meet with the President.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, make it happen, would you? Thank you. Michael Reeves.
Mayor Paris, council staff. We had a report last meeting on Medical Main Street. And I also addressed the hospital board, which I attend regularly. And I also addressed the hospital finance committee meetings, which I attend also. And I also mentioned this to the former CEO, and I have also mentioned it to the current president of electoral management in the presence of a new CEO. And the bottom line is, before we proceed with Medical Main Street, we need to work with the people in the neighborhood that live around that area. I'm convinced that Medical Main Street is the salvation of this city. You know, there's going to be 5,000 to 7,000 people working in medical buildings there. And that's a lot of money. That's a lot of jobs for the city. But we need to be conscious of the people who live around that area. Some of the people in that area have lived in their homes since the neighborhood was developed. And you can imagine the construction that's going to go on and the noise and confusion over the next few years. And I've asked the hospital people to, and now I'm asking the city in the meetings, to form a group and work with the people in the neighborhood. Because I don't believe it's fair for the people, the homeowners, to have to put up with all that without some accommodation. You know, we need to figure it out. And, you know, the bad part for the hospital is that I live six blocks from the hospital. So I'm one of the neighbors. And I'm really concerned...
That'd be bad.
About, you know, what's going to happen. Now, they always said to me, well, your property values are going to rise when we build this thing. I don't want my property values to rise. My property taxes are high enough. I have enough trouble paying them. I just want a nice area to live in, and I also want the hospital to prosper, and I also want the city to prosper, and I want people to have jobs. So let's consider the neighborhood as we go along with Medical Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. George BD. You're okay with your property values rising?
Well, somebody told me I should take it off. Show you respect.
No, no, I said you're okay with your property values.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. My property values, yeah.
Okay.
I commend you all of you on this. We're all talking about money. Now, you're aware what I brought attention to you last year on the placement of a bus stop at 20th East and J. That's a temporary location. And it's, it kind of diverted traffic because the cement curb is already busted up. There was an accident. When we do the street widening, the east side of 20th East, the bus stop has to be moved to a permanent location, one lane over. Why are we continuing to put stuff in temporary locations? Accident at K-8 and 20th East. Last year, an accident. Car took out the light post. I don't know who funded it or whatever, who paid for it. Same thing. Brand-new light posts come in, and it's in a temporary location. When we do the widening of the east side of 20th East, it all has to be moved. Now, somebody foresaw that out at I and 20th East, and they have the proper location for the light post, and it's the larger one, and it extends all the way out. But it's in a proper location. I think this is a complete waste of money. Is somebody making sure that temporary locations and the new constructions coming up are not going to be lime-lighted in there, too? Let's put them in a permanent location and eventually have the streets go to it.
Tell the new guy to come back. The guy that I can answer the question is left.
We can... We can address that later if you'd like, so, George.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah. That's all I'm saying. Let's use some common sense on a lot of this stuff. It's hard to find that stuff anymore.
What, common sense or the lights?
Common sense and the light, yeah. Oh, another thing, too. You mentioned light. Why do we do the expense of the cameras added on to the new light post at I and 20th East? Didn't LA County or somebody abolish cameras? You can't use them in a court?
Different cameras. Those cameras are for traffic control. Now, believe me, if there's some way we could keep the video, we would keep the video. But I haven't been able to make that work. But what they do is they control the streetlights. They actually don't hold any video.
Oh, okay. It's not a, okay.
Rather than have that thing you got to run over in the middle of the street, they just, you know, that's how it works.
Okay.
All right, good. Thank you. And we'll have the new guy look into that, right? Heather Brown. Come on down. I could be poetic.
Mayor, City Council, everybody else, audience. I'm here, of course, about the water. Saturday...
About you.
Pardon me?
I've been thinking about you. How are you getting the numbers on your chloride levels? And where is the chloride coming from?
The chloramine or the...
Chloride.
Well, what I'm concerned about is the chromium 6. I'm getting my numbers from AVEC, their assessment. And I've noticed that when they test wells, they don't test all of them. And it's a 70 to 130 percent contamination level. So that's where their, I don't know how 100, excuse me, 130 comes in there.
So where's it coming from?
They give you the area of the well, and I actually made a copy of that assessment and gave it to the gentleman that passed last summer for your office when I had the copy made. Anyways, but the problem of it is, that I would like to bring up tonight, is that, you know, Flint, Michigan, had this article in Time Magazine, as, you know, you probably know because you were in the article the month before, the week before, about Porter Ranch.
I was.
Yes, you were.
I never read it.
With David Bowie on the front. You never saw that?
I made Time Magazine?
Yes, you did.
I didn't read it.
You were mentioned as the attorney that was handling the Porter Ranch.
Start with you.
You didn't know that? Okay.
Did you know that?
I thought you knew that. Because they have quotes from you. They have quotes in there, so you must have known.
I really didn't.
Anyways, I brought these, my research...
The only place I read is the Valley Press.
That are also cited, so you may also look up the...
Okay, but back to the question.
Okay.
You've got rising chloride levels, right?
Well, not chloride. You have chromium 6. Okay, chromium 6 is a...
I know what that is. Where's it coming from?
It's a solvent, and it's coming from, like we had discussed in August, 40th East and Avenue N, those trenches. It's, they're not code, okay?
Well, how does it get there?
And I mean, I would gladly go out there and help them...
How does it get there?
It percolates through the concrete. Okay, because chromium 6 is a hexavalent chromium, is an extremely coercive... Whatever, metal. It's right in there with lead, okay? So what happens is, is when they paint the stealth and the B2 repairs, the primer is made up a lot of the hexavalent chromium. And so when it's left in the tank, not what's put into the air, but what's left in the tank is poured in these trenches, and it percolates through the two inches of concrete and gets into the underground water aquifers. But it can be brought up to code, and we wouldn't have this problem. So I don't understand what... I talked to someone from Northrop, and they said that...
I can tell you the problem we have is it's not in the city. It's in the county.
Right, I understand, and it's government, and it's... I talked to someone from Northrop, and he said that it would have to go to litigation. And I said, wouldn't you rather just fix the problem and bring it up to code?
Have we looked into this?
We've looked into this issue two or three times. I don't know about this particular one. We did look into the water quality issue and stuff. We did not look into anything that dealt with Northrop.
Well, it's...
We have looked at the water quality twice. They do test all of the wells. They have provided a report. We had an independent report done.
Yeah, but what we're finding out of the Porter Ranch thing is they're very selective in what they test.
Right.
Let's revisit this.
And the problem of it is, is you can Google MapQuest these trenches. If you go on Google MapQuest now, you probably won't be able to.
Okay, Heather, this is what we're going to do.
Okay.
I'm going to revisit it.
Anyways, I brought my research on the site, so you may look it up.
Let's give them 45 days or so, and we'll talk again.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good, thanks. Shannon McDonald. Hi, Shannon, how are you?
Fine. I missed you last week. I didn't even speak because you weren't here last week, you see. No offense to anyone. I just, I miss my mayor sometimes. But I'm here to tell you, I am happy with the city, but I'm not.
Okay.
At the same time. Happy but not. Usually have compliments and stuff, but I was happy until I realized that I've been coming here for a while, just like the school district, and I haven't asked for anything. I didn't intend to ask for anything. I'm coming here solely because I love my city and solely because I actually have looked at every single, most of you in the room, as colleagues of mine eventually, just to keep it real. Well, what happened was last week, well, actually, let me see. This happened, this is what, this is one of the ones that bothered me. February 4th, serious crime increases in AV. Lancaster increased, Palmdale decreased. Embracing the concept of community policing. That word, right, those two words right there. Where law enforcement, city staff, businesses, and residents come together as partners has been very successful in Palmdale. Mayor Jim Ledford said in the city's announcement of the crime statistics. Let me stop there. I brought this to this, I brought this here about a year or so ago. I have the memo with me, actually, that I typed a year or so ago. And what gets me is that this was supposed to be our baby. This is the way I see it. I came here, I know I said straight up, let's think more of what's going on in our city and stop looking at what everybody else is doing so that people can come to us and ask us what we're doing right. Now, we got to go to Palmdale. I'm not happy about that because that was something that we could have brought here. I would have been more, you know, I have a criminal justice degree, sociology and a public policy degree as well. So I would have loved to go with the sheriff's deputies and have conversations with them to see how they community police. There's areas that we could have hit. That was just one issue. So that's one disappointment. Another one, school district. This is you guys, too, in a sense, because I'm dealing with them, too, on some. The Palmdale School District seeks 120, wait, excuse me, $12 million grant. Having issues with stuff like that, too. But my biggest thing is that I've brought things here. I don't ask for anything, but just ideas. I've put in four applications for the commission. Just call me and tell me no then. Call me and tell me no. This is, I'm 40. I turned 40 January 22nd. I've been in school for the last 11, 12 years. Yeah, this is career mode for me. So I don't want to waste my time, but I don't want to waste anyone in the city's time either by coming to these meetings and not getting anywhere. Like I said, I haven't asked for anything. But there's nothing that anybody can see that Shannon McDonald can do for the city? Nothing at all? That's all I'm saying. I really don't want to go anywhere else, but there are other cities. I'm in career mode now. My goal is the White House. Ron Paul, Ron Paul, isn't that who? He's got my job.
You were doing so good.
I know. See? I love you guys, though.
I know you do. You know, the easy way to drop your crime stats is to just not arrest people.
Shannon, you're right.
Right.
But they put this in the paper, though, so it kind of bothers me when I saw those words. Criminal, what is it? Community policing?
Okay, Shannon, I'll take a look at that again, okay? I'm sorry. Let me see what she's applied for and where the apps are, okay? Jason Zink.
Mayor, I think it's pompous and arrogant for you to let the staff go and not to hear the public speak. I think that shows disrespect to the public.
I am pompous and arrogant at times, although that wasn't my intention.
And I also think that you bully Michael Reeves, and I want it to end. I don't like these comments you make regarding it. It's not right. And for you guys to be, sign that thing for bullying and stuff like that, and here you are, bullying. Okay, the $80 million Measure R funds, you should use that money to put a Lancaster Boulevard off-ramp in Lancaster and put an off-ramp on Avenue 08 for the mall. Traffic already backs up on the freeway going into the mall, so that'd be a perfect expenditure. The DMV, we have yet to hear any public comment from Palmdale or Lancaster regarding them closing down the Palmdale and Lancaster DMV and building it over there on 10th Street West and, actually, 8th Street West and L-6. Why? What's wrong with this city? What's wrong with Palmdale City that we don't value public comment? The Roundabout, I was thinking a good idea is to put a monument of the Challenger Space Station there since, you know, coming from Edwards over to Plant 42. Also, you guys are using not the red clay that is a signature of Lancaster. You're using this off color. There's no contrast. It doesn't make the streets look good. It doesn't make the community look good. You need to put, I asked A&amp;M Construction who did it. They says, well, we just go by what they do. They says, well, wouldn't it look better if it was, you know, some contrast? They said, yes, it would. So maybe you can look into that, maybe dye the concrete the red color. February 27th is sanitation district, maybe you can find out more information. The sanitation district tour of sanitation. So I encourage every city council member, every planning commissioner, every commission, every citizen to go out there to buy ponds and see what a waste of water it is for that water to sit out there on clay water to be evaporated. We should be building Apollo Parks right here in downtown Lancaster on the east side and the west side. For that water just to be wasted, it's unreal. We could turn this into a real paradise, and we don't. Why? Also, we need to form a community service district. We need to take Palmdale Water District, Cal Water, the Water Works, and turn it into one body. We'd have Dennis and Matt run that part of it, the water sewer and flood control. Either Matt or Jason could run the community service district, and that way we'd have a local planning board for the unincorporated community. Job pay is probably $300,000, $400,000, so it's probably twice as what you guys make. So maybe you guys be motivated to do it. So that's it. Thank you.
Fran. I saved you for last.
There you go. That's fine. That's good, thank you. Well, good evening. Thank you for listening to me, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Ladies and gentlemen, there are left. I went to the border supervisors meeting via Lancaster Library. I wasn't going to go, but they started to talk about the homeless. And I was going to speak, I spoke with, on the issue of, what is it, number, whatever number it was, oh, 47A, that the monies that they're going to have to, for the homeless are building homes and helping the homeless. But there's, my question was, and I brought it up to the supervisors when I was able to speak, they mentioned 88 cities that were included in these monies. There was, oh, dear, $100 million. And I asked, of course, they didn't answer me. And I said, we were included in that bunch of 88 cities. Because they showed a, they showed a video, but the video showed all the cities on the south side of LA and all on that side of Los Angeles. They didn't show anything on our side as far as the county. And that made me a little upset because, and I was going to speak further, but I had to leave again. I had to leave because I had to get ready for this meeting. But I also mentioned, did anybody from ours, Lancaster, go at all to be representative, represent us in this situation? Because when I said, I asked them, and I said, well, nobody's there to represent Lancaster. I am. I'm solely the one going to represent Lancaster. And, okay, that's one thing. I was a little upset, not upset, I was a little hurt and a little disillusioned that all this problem we've been having with the homeless and nobody had the gumption or whatever, and I'm, the real Don Hall feeling of going to do something to help us. You know, we're always complaining, they don't want to do anything for Lancaster. The city council and supervisors don't want to help us. But you, we have to get out there and say something about this.
So what's the deal?
Let me address that. We meet with county reps about twice a week. So we're meeting with them. We've meet with Norm Hickling and the other county reps in regards to the 60th. We've met with other people in regards to the $100 million that you're talking about and get our fair share. We're also, we meet with LASSA reps. LASSA gave the city of Lancaster an award two weeks ago in regards to the work that we've done towards the homeless. So we are meeting with them. It's when their council meetings or their, when the supervisors meet, we do not attend those. And it's, we go through their reps, and we met with Supervisor Antonovich last Wednesday. Wasn't it last Wednesday that we met? So we are meeting with them.
Okay, I just wish they would, you know, at least say that we're representative or something to the public, so the public of Lancaster is listening to these, to them seeking on all these issues, that we are being representative. They don't say that, and that's what makes me upset.
They, they know who we are, Fran.
Oh, okay, because, you know, we're all saying they don't help us, they don't help us, and now somebody to get up there and do something. I was going to...
But we still appreciate you.
Okay. I have other things to say, but I guess my time is up. Oh, one big thing, and I'm going to just take my 12 minutes or whatever I have, 12 minutes. Yeah, sure. The senior center. I just got some good news that, Mr. Mayor, what did you tell me?
It's a secret, Fran.
Oh, okay, I won't tell you yet, but we're going to have a new senior center. God willing, we'll be, thank you very much for all your efforts. In fact, I was going to bring that up in the public speaking today at the supervisors meeting, but I had to run to come here. And I was going to bring that up and ask them what's been happening because I know that the community center now has bought that property that was in question, that was needed to expand the senior center. And I believe now we'll be able to have, cook our own food here instead of having it brought in from two and a half hours in West Covina and eating frozen food. in from two and a half hours in West Covina and eating frozen food.
Let's just say Supervisor Antonovich is going to do something wonderful.
That's good. That's a good thought. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Now I can rest for another week. No, I'm going to try to go to a meeting tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay, any comments from the city council? Moving on.
I thought my murder won't go on.
Do we have a executive session today?
Oh, no.
Nobody suing us? Nobody wants anything? Nobody? Nobody ran over anybody in the park or?
I know that he was listening.
Okay, the city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, February 23rd, 2016, at 5:00 PM. Carol, I'm coming home. I wish you were there.